Call board of the Sparks City Council Meeting of February 23, 2015 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
If you could all stand for the invocation Pastor Steve Bond from the Summit Christian Church, welcome Pastor.
Thank you, and before I get going, I just wanted to say thank you guys for serving in our community. If you're like most leaders, you don't get thanked enough, and we live in an incredible community, and thank you for what you do for us. Father in heaven, we give you great thanks for the beautiful day that you have blessed us with, and standing here, Father, I thank you for the pleasantness in this room as I sat and watched the conversations swirling around, Father. The sense of camaraderie, togetherness, joy. I know, Father, there are issues that are important to deal with, but I thank you that in a spirit of collegiality and harmony, these issues can be addressed, and I would pray for wisdom for this team of people that you have blessed to govern our city. Father, would today be a day that their burdens don't weigh heavy on their shoulders, that you give them grace to listen well to one another, to make wise deliberations and wise decisions for our city. We thank you, Father, for the enduring strength that you have given many of these through these past difficult years, and we look with great anticipation, Father, for what's on the near horizon, indeed what's already happening in our community, with great robust days ahead of blessing at every level. So thank you, Father, for those that have helped to navigate the difficult days and give them great wisdom today and indeed into tomorrow, as great decisions need to be made. Father, thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks.
Thank you Pastor. If you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Lawson, would you lead us?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is public comment, I don't have any speaking cards, anyone who want to speak in or comment to the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not looking for motion, Mr. Smith moved to approve. Move second. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the agenda as outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Approval of the minutes, consideration approval of the minutes for the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of February 9, 2015. Any omissions or deletions or corrections? If not looking for motion, Mr. Lawson.
Moved to approve.
Second, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the meeting minutes of February 9, 2015, additional discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Announcements, presentation, 7.1 Human Services Networks Politician of the Year Award. Who's doing this? Mr. Driscoll. Miss, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Lawson, I'm lost.
Thank you, Mayor Martini and fellow council members. It's a delight and a privilege to be here today. My name is Eric Schoen, I am the Executive Director of the Human Services Network. We are a dynamic collaborative of over 60 health and human service providers from throughout the state with a particularly strong concentration here in the Trucking Meadows area. We believe passionately in the value that health and human services providers can provide to the quality of life here in Nevada. We believe it's not only a moral imperative to help those unable to help themselves, we also think it's a humanitarian concern, and we think it is amongst the best ways that you can spend public funds, because funding spent on health and human services is oftentimes an economic catalyst and driver for further economic development efforts, and if that doesn't make sense, think about it this way. If we give resources to Nevadans so that they have enough to not only survive but to thrive, every Nevadaan throughout the state will have the ability to be a productive member of the workforce and to have a high quality of life and be a contributor to their communities. And so that's what we believe in as a network. Every year, we have an award ceremony, which three of you were present, I really appreciate that, City Attorney Adams, Councilwoman Julia Ratty, and Mayor Martini. We do an annual awards event where we honor individuals and organizations who embody and understand this wisdom and have pulled the cause of health and human services forward. And this is where the story starts to get interesting. This is the first year we have ever given an award surreptitiously, and let me paint the scene for you a little bit so you can understand this. Mayor Martini, correct me if I'm wrong, when you arrived that morning, just about a month ago, for our Brookhurst Awards, you thought you were only going to be singing Mayor Kishel's praises for why he deserved to be a recipient of the Politician of the Year Award, and that's because only Mayor Kishel and myself knew what we were about to do. And that is, once Mayor Martini had indeed introduced Mayor Kishel ably for why he deserved to be a recipient of the Politician of the Year Award, Mayor Kishel unbeknownst to you turned the tables and sent your praises. And specifically what we were doing was honoring both of these men for their strong contributions and their help in getting the homeless shelter established on Record Street. If you ask me, that is one of our finest accomplishments collectively, to have made a statement that those people matter, people who are homeless and oftentimes not of their own doing. As well, we also wanted to thank you for your efforts on behalf of the triage efforts in the area, as well as senior services here in Sparks. And so, we wanted to do, make sure that Mayor Martini was honored outside of Mayor Kishel's shadow, because we know that he oftentimes gets all the credit, and we know that Mayor Martini, you were an equal partner in that, and so what I would like to do today is represent the award for you, which reads, Human Services Network 2014 Politician of the Year, Mayor Gino Martini, City of Sparks, so you all have that to be proud of. As well, as well, a picture commemorating the moment when you received the award for Mayor Kishel. I'll tell you, having been to many of these awards presentations, this was one of our finest moments. It was a standing ovation for both of these men for their lifelong efforts in helping to make this happen, and there were many, many people who needed hinkies at that moment, because it was also a very, very touching moment. So, on behalf of everybody, Human Services Network and throughout the communities, thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Eric, I really appreciate this, you know, Mr. Kishel did all the heavy lifting, believe me, on the shelter and stuff, and I want to thank the council for supporting the homeless shelter. I think it's something that was really needed in this particular area, and it's a great facility, and I enjoyed being part of it, and again, without the support of the council would have never happened. And I love this picture, somebody probably would say that the caption on the bottom of this should be called the Witt Brothers, half and dim, these two guys right here, so. But I always enjoy being in the shadow of Mr. Kishel, he casts a big shadow like I do myself, so, thank you so much, I certainly appreciate this honor, thank you. Okay, let's move on to 7.2, is the mic on here?
Not hurtling, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Let's move on to 8.1 Consent Items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not looking for motion, Mr. Ratty.
Moved to approve consent items 8.1 and 8.2.
Ms. Byby.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Byby to approve consent items 8.1 and 8.2, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to General Business, 9.1 Consideration and Possible Approval for the Parks and Recreation Department to Pursue Federal and Foundation Resources to Complete the West End Gymnasium Pool and Opeo Park Flatfield Project. Ms. Dominguez, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you today is simply a request to allow staff to pursue funding to finish a long-awaited project, which is Larry D. Johnson Community Center. As you know, standing today is Phase One of three. We would need, these are old numbers, we have to do our research and do new numbers, but approximately 13 million to finish that facility, phases two and three combined. And the flatfields referenced are the hope to work with Washoe County School District and go after some funding and partners to put some good soccer fields over there, either natural turf or artificial. Artificial would be obviously much more expensive, but those are some of the hopes that we could do if we go after federal funding and grant opportunities. I'm currently also pursuing potential partners in these projects as well. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Tracy. Go ahead, Charlie.
Tracy, do you have any specific, there's some grants that you know are coming available? What kind of timeline are you looking at? Obviously, as you get the money, you'll be able to start the next two phases, but do you know where some money might be coming from right now that we can, you're pursuing?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Driscoll for the record, what we're really asking for here is, we've been having some conversations with our federal lobbyists and with the federal delegations. They think that there might be some combinations of monies that would be in the form of grants that may allow us to do these projects. And so, before we got too far down the road with our grant policy, we want to make sure we had your permission to go take a hard look at it. In some instances, these might be no-match grants, or they could have matches, so we wanted to make sure that when we had a serious conversation, because there's about to be a lot of work spent on this by our federal lobbyists and committing some time with our federal delegation, so they believe that they have some opportunities that might fit well into the types of projects that Tracy's proposing. So with that, we wanted just permission to explore, and that at any point in time that it doesn't make sense, we would stop, and if we don't run into a stopping point, then maybe we get ourselves a couple of projects, some additional land that would be available, and doing some things that are potentially very, very necessary on that side of town.
Mr. Ratty.
I'm just really excited to see this. The way I look at it, we put this project on the back burner when the economic conditions changed, because the environment didn't make sense here, it also didn't make sense in Washington, so the fact that we can pull off that back burner and, you know, turn up the light a little bit just to start looking at it again, is very exciting to me, because we know that the Phase One project, while it's a wonderful building, doesn't meet the needs of the community. So I'm really excited to see this move forward. Thanks for resurrecting it.
Yes, I think it's a great opportunity, if completed, to enhance the recreation opportunities on the west side of town. It's definitely needed.
Ms. Byby.
I totally support the project, and actually, when I was out campaigning, I did have several conversations with people, not just in that part of town, but in other parts of town, even in Ward Four, my ward, of people very concerned that there was a lack of resources and community center and pool and playing fields over on that side of town, other than the high schools and middle schools, and that really, a lot of people, as well as a few people that were involved in the swimming community, who obviously are looking for the pool space, but I'm excited to see that going forth, because I think there is a gap in those neighborhoods, and I think that would be, you know, with the Larry D. Johnson Center, would be a great thing, so hopefully we get it moving and get some federal money and get it built.
That would be great. I think that also, I have reached out to Chad Hicks, who's the Area Superintendent over Sparks Middle School, and he's agreed to help me out and reach that community and provide interpreters and all of that to make sure that we're doing what the community wishes to have over there.
Mr. Ratty.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Sure.
I move to approve and direct the Parks and Recreation Department to pursue funding mechanisms for the Larry D. Johnson Community Center Gymnasium, the West End Pool Construction, and the Open Field at Opeo Park.
Do you have a second? Ms. Byby.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Byby to approve 9.1, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, I see Mr. Kazmersky's here, so we'll go back to 7.2. We ran right by you, Mike, because we were running early, and we're really moving fast today, so. Come on down.
And they should be attached to their agenda item.
Mayor, council members, Mike Kazmersky with Enoa, it's good to be here. Sorry I was a little bit late. Usually your government is not this fast, so congratulations.
On the Sparks more often. We were about to have our fastest meeting ever.
We'll slow that up a little bit for you. The reason I've asked to come by is to give you an update on where we are in the strategic plan. Really, we're updating our economic development strategic plan, we published it in August. City of Sparks was a participant when we did the original plan, so we want the city and all the entities in the region to be on board with the new plan, or at least the direction we're going. We will have a draft on this in the next week or two for more detailed review, but we wanted to get concept approval as we go forward. Over 200 community stakeholders, the first go-around, and the plan is working. I mean, the reality is, everything we've laid out in the strategic plan seems to be on track. The community has worked very well together to help us achieve our goals as set out in the plan, and it's not a plan where we need to start over, it's just a plan we need to tweak and make some adjustments. With the growth we're anticipating, certainly, we've talked about that as a region before, a lot of other announcements, we do want to start to think about, okay, now, we're not going to bring every, any job in here we can, what we need to do is bring the right jobs in and make sure this community accommodates the growth that's in the pipeline. So we're asking for your input and thoughts as we go forward. Certainly, the city manager and staff will continue to be involved going forward in the review process, but this is your shot at kind of the first update, and then you'll get the draft version with the goal of having it out here probably by May. You've seen the three legs, nothing new there, they will remain in the plan, but we will tweak them. As we look at our report on jobs assisted, this is for fiscal year, we continue to exceed our goal as was laid out in the strategic plan, and we're tentatively setting a mark of about 3,000 for the next three years, and we think next, this coming year, we'll actually exceed that. This is part of the reason we need to update the plan, it was not that long ago when unemployment was significant, and we're now at the point where we will probably get into the fives by the end of this year, which is really good news. Full employment is 4.5, so we're close to hitting full employment or will be by the end of this year, early next year. So as you look at average wage versus assisted jobs, when the jobs, job numbers were going up, we were seeing a decrease in the average wage, and part of that was because we were bringing larger companies, that may be a Zulily or a Toys R Us or something, which would tend to have a large number of employees but a lower average wage. So while we got the job numbers up, we weren't getting the average wage increase we had hoped for. Well, we're at the point now where the jobs are starting to become, we're starting to bring in more of the higher-paying jobs, we're telling companies that are looking at us with the $10, $12, even $15 an hour average wage, that you probably will have great difficulty finding employees to meet your job needs going forward, and if average wage is really an important part of your model, this is probably not the best fit for you. So as we encourage more of the high-growth companies and discourage the lower-growth, or the lower-wage companies, that you'll continue to see that increase in average wage, and so far this year, we're pretty happy with the numbers from an average wage perspective. The other thing we had in the strategic plan that we, on the attraction side, that we will continue to push on, is corporate headquarters. And what's amazing is, as you look at these numbers, when we started off, we were looking at four or five corporate headquarters. In a year, we're actually, this coming year, we expect to be as high as 15, that 10 is continuing to increase, and part of that is, companies are more willing to put the Reno Sparks brand on their product, on their corporate logo, on their return address, whereas five years ago, that may not have been the case. You know, the place where Tesla is, the place where Microsoft is, the way where a lot of good economic activity is occurring, gives them a reason to look at us a little bit differently. So the corporate headquarters is number is especially important, because you get that those high-paying executives that come here, they bring their business travel to the region, they bring their conventions and a lot of their conferences to the region, so it has a lot of significant multipliers associated with it. And then clearly Tesla, a huge deal, this photograph is about a month old now, it is, you know, I'm told they're at over 2 million square feet already, and the number will go up pretty dramatically from there. But jobs aside, we're looking at the brand it puts on the region, not only does it put us on the radar as the place for Tesla, but it puts us on the radar as a place for advanced manufacturing, a place for technology, a place for entrepreneurs, research and development, we're getting more and more interest in areas like that. And of course, you've seen this chart before, it is, some people would say scary, some people would say exciting, it depends on your perspective. When you look back to the 2.2% growth, those are the heydays here. We had up to 20% increase in construction costs during that run-up. Imagine what's going to happen in the next five years. So it's a pretty interesting challenge for the region. Last time I was here, not talking about the strategic plan, just talking about economic development, you recall I said, be ready for Tesla? Well, we're bringing in not one Tesla, but three. The equivalent of three Teslas are coming to the region in the next five years. So as you look at attraction efforts, we'll continue to effectively market the region, we will not, we will market to more of the higher-paying companies, attract high-growth and headquarters, continue to work with our site selectors and national site, real estate agents, so that they continue to understand what's here, but we're going to work a little bit more on the average wage. That's an important part. Wages will go up for just about everybody, and the company executive decides not to raise their wages, will be the one that finds their best employee's gone shortly after that decision, because there'll be plenty of other opportunities. Advanced manufacturing sector and cluster development is part of advanced manufacturing, growing the region so that we just don't have the manufacturer, we have the suppliers and providers. Tesla will help us with some of this, but it's a much bigger project than just meeting Tesla's needs. And then downtown, the downtown Reno area is a little bit of the creative class that we're going to need, certainly there's a downtown here as well that we will want to incorporate in our move to have livable, live-work-play environments for employees, the millennials like that. On the retention, okay, so that's on the attraction side, you can see we're not changing a lot. We are doing some things a little bit different, but we have not planned to do a significant change attracting companies, because that has worked pretty well for us. On the retention side, we'll continue to do visits, we're meeting our visit numbers, that's been pretty effective, and the components of the program will pretty much be what we had laid out and what we're working on for the last couple of years, really just to connect with our employers that are here and help them connect with whoever they need for help, for employees. Oftentimes, you'll get a call from Nancy and her team, if there's someone that has an issue in the City of Sparks, city manager, one of the elected officials, that connection to the companies that are here, because they're very, very important. Sometimes, they see Tesla on the paper, day in and day out, and they start to think, well, what am I? No one cares about me. And the reality is, they've been employing employees and paying taxes for, in some cases, decades. So that making them, you know, making them feel the love and understand that we do care about them as part of this program, and certainly appreciate the efforts the entire council has put into helping us connect with some of our companies, so I want to thank you for that. That part of the program will just pretty much continue as we go forward. Just got a list here, a little bit more cluster and sector advancement, and then the company-to-company interaction is important. We're doing that now, but we want to keep, put even more emphasis on that. If you have a company in one block that could very easily do business with a company in another block, we want to help them know they're there and help them connect. It may save costs for one company and cause the other company to have more success. So we're doing that, we're tracking that, that's a big part of the program. So the BRNE, or Business Retention and Expansion Efforts, will pretty much stay the same with a little bit more focus on workforce. And then finally, the Entrepreneurial Progress Report, we are absolutely thrilled with where we are with entrepreneurs, helping us get that feel as a community for the creative class. It's essential for us to be successful in attracting technology companies and meeting the needs of companies like Tesla, to have more of a feel that supports the entrepreneurship, energy, startup act, innovation, district, startup activity, all those things that bring that kind of creative class that a company like Tesla is looking for. This is incredibly impressive from a regional perspective, to have in just a few years national recognition as a place for startups, as a place for entrepreneurial growth. You look at some of these Global Innovation Summit last week, we received an award as a region for what we're doing, there were 1,000 companies from across the world talking about innovation. Next City will have that conference here in May, that's an important Next City, we were selected as the Next City, the first Next City to be selected west of the Mississippi. Just imagine that, we were called, we, and essentially it's the region, as the Next City. Not something you would think of a couple of years ago. Best Startup Cities in America, E-City, IEDC Recognizer Entrepreneurial Development Program, the International Economic Developers Council, so a lot of traction on the entrepreneurial side and a lot of recognition at the national level, which is really what has allowed us to grow this program a lot of ways. I'd like to talk about our entrepreneurial ecosystem a little bit, and here are just some of the components of it, and this is just a fraction, but if you look at this and you say, okay, I see some of these things on here, I've been to a million cups, or I know what networking is, I've heard of the rainforest, well, three years ago, no one really knew about any of this. If you look at the red up there, there are areas where we put some extra emphasis, but all of that aside, that red line down the middle, as far as government is concerned, everything to the left of that red line doesn't exist, because companies don't even pull a business license until they get past that red line. So you need a lot of work prior to even pulling a business license, and a lot of support to help these companies get to the point where they actually pull a license, and now they're on the radar from a government perspective. And that's why having a lot of those activities before they become a legal entity is very important, and you can see after that, there's some government support as they go from startup to scale up. Just the areas of focus for the Entrepreneurial Development Strategy, we'll continue in these areas, they have, they have worked very, very well up to this point, with a new emphasis, try and bring more capital to the region, it's hard to do that, the capital goes where the projects are, but we are starting to have more viable projects because of our mentorship program, venture, what's it called, VMS Mentoring Program we have here, we're starting to educate our companies so they can ask for money in the right way. It's almost like another language, and they need help. Attracting entrepreneurs to the region, we are doing that more effectively now than ever. They're starting to see us as a little bit more cool environment and a place where they wouldn't mind raising their family and maybe building a company. So a new emphasis in some of these areas, and as we look at, okay, those are the first three legs, attract, retain, and grow. The top of the stool we haven't talked about, but that's workforce development. Workforce development affects all three legs, you've got to have talent to do entrepreneurial development, you've got to have talent to retain your companies, you have to have talent to bring in new companies, so we're putting a little bit more emphasis, in fact, significantly more emphasis on workforce development, and then underneath that is the community development part, we don't And then underneath that is the community development part we don't want to miss. We have a great business-friendly environment here. Government is supportive of business. We have relatively low taxes. We have, our government is, is much quicker than most other places. That community development part is something we want to keep working on. So as you look at workforce efforts, this is something new in an area that we really think as a region, we need to get serious about. If we can't meet the needs of those employers in the next five years, we're going to have a problem. And oh, by the way, if you do the math, university graduates, 3,000, 4,000 students a year, maybe, if they were all to stay here, and then we get another 1,000 or two from, from our high school that maybe go through the community college, we get, you know, somewhere between 3,000 and 5,000 students that if everyone decided to stay here, okay, you've got that added to the workforce. Well, that's at best 25,000. Most of those graduates tend to go somewhere else. They just want to get out of town or whatever. So you might have 3,000 or 4,000, but we need 50,000 to 60,000. So we're going to have to import talent to some degree. Workforce needs are very, very important as we go forward, and I will tell you, it is my number-one concern from an economic development perspective because if an employee that's getting paid $18, $19, $20 an hour can go work for Tesla and get paid 25, maybe have to drive a little bit, what do you think they're going to do? You're going to lose employees at Tesla. So all those companies that have been here, making up the backbone of this community, are going to lose their talent. They're going to lose it, and if we don't have a pipeline ready to backfill those positions, some of those companies will go out of business. They just won't be able to backfill the talent fast enough. So that's, one of our messages is, you know, want to take care of your workforce. In some cases, people won't move for a higher wage because they really like where they work. I keep telling my staff that. In other cases, you know, $0.05 an hour, and they're jumping because they don't like their supervisor, they don't like what they're doing. So part of this helping the workforce effort piece is really an attitude in the community to train the workforce, to invest in our education system, to do things so that we produce the quality workforce that these employers will need, the ones that we're bringing in. And by the way, there are quite a few in the pipeline to come here. And then branding. Branding is very, very important because if you want to attract talent, back to that headquarters discussion earlier, if you want to attract talent, they want to come to a region that they think's either kind of neat or, you know, has a great quality of life and decent schools and all the things that most people think about. And Reno hasn't been on the radar in many cases for those, those strengths, and we all know we have strengths in all those areas. So part of our brand is to help people tell, to help people understand what we have here from a strength perspective. We do have great quality of life. We do have, you know, low taxes and, and wonderful environment and, you know, our infrastructure is up to speed. Our schools certainly need more funding, but the talent they produce is excellent. So we have a lot of those strengths. So branding the region, taking advantage of the Tesla connection is very important if we're going to be successful on workforce. And again, this is our top priority as we look at the update of the strategic plan. And then community development, how do we help in the community make the product better? The UNR growth is very, very important, that brand that is associated with the Tier One University, critically important. Helping them get more engaged in our downtown is important. A place for entrepreneurs, getting entrepreneurs engaged more with the business community. Our air service, we're starting to upgrade. That's thanks to great efforts by Mary Lee Mora and her team out there at the airport and, and the different organizations that are supporting her. And then I mentioned Image as well, that's all kind of connected. The Epic Study, and I'm not sure to what extent you're updating, updated on that, but the Economics Planning Indicators Committee is well on our way to producing a report here within the next 30 to 45 days, we would think, that can talk to, here is where we think the growth is going to be, here's how much it's going to be, here are the impacts on these particular areas, and that will give each of the entities in the region a chance to do their own planning on where that growth, those jobs, those houses are expected to occur in the next five years. So the Epic Study is something that we, we will have done here fairly soon. And then some of the other things you see there for community development, I kind of mentioned fiber connectivity as a technology hub with Switch coming in here to continue to promote our fiber connectivity makes us very, very attractive to the creative class and the technology companies. We will need that as we support data center growths like Switch and others. So the fiber piece is a part of our long-term plan, and then industrial land needs. There are concerns about running out of industrial land. It's a significant problem in the very long term and the near term. It's something that we think we can accommodate. So we're looking at what do we do, because when you start just taking a chunk of dirt and saying this is a long-term industrial lands area, you're talking five to 10 years, 10 years out before you really can make progress. So we want to start looking at that, asking some questions and seeing where we can move the ball on that. So our focus, three years ago, quantity, inventory, retention, infrastructure growth and the entrepreneurship, working on the brand and assessing workforce needs, and where we're planning to go with this new updated strategic plan, more effort or emphasis on, on the quality of the jobs, help companies with change and help them accommodate the change, the mentorship support and attract entrepreneurship, revitalization and brand for the community, and then the workforce, coordinating regional needs to meet the demands. What it looks like from a focus effort, we had workforce kind of rolled in with Nancy and all the things she's doing. We're going to pull that out now as a separate area of focus and put a little bit more emphasis on that as we go forward. And then that's kind of a, a quick concept update of where we are planning to go with the strategic plan for your questions or input. It's a short version. I could give you the longer version, but I figured.
Okay, questions for Mike? Comments? Charlene, Bybee.
Hi, Mike. Question on the industrial land needs. It just came before regional governing, you know, last week, we talked, discussion on where the locations are for the industrial land. What do you see our needs being in the next five to 10 years? And where, you know, it kind of looks like Spanish Springs and north of us in the county is the biggest area, but where, where do you see, what would our needs be and how do you see us meeting those needs that we're going to have coming in?
Well, we clearly have, as a region, some opportunity out at TRI, although as of this morning, there's no land available out there that's ready for development. So they've got to put more infrastructure in to meet future needs. But they have, you know, some opportunity out there, and that's where heavy manufacturing tends to go. We have some business parks already, but the reality is we have some encroachment on some of those areas that we've got to be careful about. So we've got to be careful we don't encroach too much. We're having some of that already in, you know, in some operations right here in downtown Sparks where neighbors didn't like the fact or don't like the fact that a company's making noise because they're manufacturing something 24/7. So you really need a place that's a little bit away from the housing, that doesn't have that kind of encroachment concerns. So obviously, north is our best opportunity. If you look at the region and say, we think there's probably going to be more growth up at Sted, there's only so much industrial land in that area and north, and you say, okay, we've only got so many opportunities to grow up Pyramid Highway, and that's already a crowded road as you look at trucks and truck traffic. Somewhere up north is an option. Clearly, working with Kim Robinson and the Planning Authority, as we start to look at this, this is something that we don't decide in even months. It's probably going to take us a few years and probably some land swaps and things like that to get what we need, which is a complement to what TRI offers, but a little bit closer to the neighborhood so we don't have these long commutes that we're, we're going to have for a long time. So something that is more friendly to the commute piece and certainly will help our, our region grow in a way that allows for maybe light industrial or industrial that you start talking technology, manufacturing, and some of the other things we're looking at, a lot of opportunity. But again, we're, we're probably going to run out of, at least within Washoe County, industrial land in the very near future. I mean, that I think is a reality. So at some point, we'll tell companies, and the first thing they want to see is, okay, well, where can I go? And if the answer is nowhere, then that's a real, real short conversation. So we have to have some opportunities for them in the long term. And looking at that as a region is something that'll take us, you know, probably a couple of years, certainly, you know, quite a few months to go through the process and then identify and then start the process. My guess is it'll take some BLM, BLM land trades and things like that, so we've got some work to do. But if we wait until we need it, it's too late. We've got to get on it now.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, always good hearing from you. The news keeps getting better and better. On slide number six, you had assisted jobs listed, listed, assisted jobs? What does that mean?
Assisted jobs. It means only the jobs that we physically worked on. We have, you know, the region grows, if you look at the Dieter website, there are certain jobs that come in, and it's hard to tell where that job, that job came from and if it's a primary job or a secondary job or, you know, if the casino, one casino added 1,000 employees or laid off, it's hard to tell because it's just a generic job number. What we do is we track companies we physically work with, and if we have provided significant assistance, and that means we helped them get their incentive package, or we, we attracted them with our marketing materials, or we're working with partners, let's say the airport calls and someone called us, and then we suddenly connect with them and start working with them. We have to do assisting, we call it assisted jobs. We have a, our board policy has a very specific criteria for what we call assisted, and a good example is, Apple came in here, the state asked us for data on the Apple land, on resources. We sent all that through the state office. We never once personally talked to Apple, and while it's a wonderful addition to the community, it's not something we consider assisted. So we don't count it in our numbers, but it's a very real project. So we're, it's just kind of our metric. We know exactly where every number is, so there's no fudge there. If we assisted on them, that tells us, it gives us a good year-over-year measurement.
Okay, great. You mentioned Tesla, Switch, and the third one hasn't been announced yet?
Well, we have several other fairly significant projects that we haven't announced yet.
Okay. I noticed Tesla had a job fair up at UNR. Was that for the, the infrastructure they're putting up now?
Yes.
Or is that for?
That's part of their project right now, and, and it was a huge show. I'm hearing over 650 people.
That's what the paper said.
Pretty exciting showing, and, and they'll be doing it again.
And did you say they've got over 2 million square feet up already?
Two, 2 million square feet or more poured.
That's amazing.
And that's a fraction of what they're looking at.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Good report.
Mr. Ratty.
Hi. A couple things, a couple pain points for us that I know you're already aware of, but I just wanted to emphasize, certainly in Victorian Square with the Bourbon Square recently announcing that they're going dark, you know, on the one hand, that's unfortunate news, but on the other hand, perhaps it presents an opportunity because I know that having a casino in that building was a detriment to some of the possibilities. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware that there's a change in status there and that it's still an area that we need some help with whenever that, whenever it makes sense for the folks that you're working with. Second, for the long term, not, I know it's not for the short term because we have lots of work to do on the flood project, but for the long term, as we're starting to talk about our planning, the redevelopment of the industrial area east of the freeway, or sorry, south of the freeway, that never comes up in this conversation, and I understand it's because on the short term it has some serious issues. But I just want to make sure that it stays on the radar screen for long term when, when the flood project is successful, and what is the right use for that land, because right now it's underutilized. And I, and as there are pressures, I mean, as there are market pressures where land is short, part of me says, well, yes, you could go do a BLM land shop swap, but the other part of me says, well, if there's pressures, maybe that land becomes more viable. So just wanting to make sure that that stays in the mix of the dialogue if nothing else.
It's very much in the mix, and it's, it's considered very small from an industrial perspective.
And I get that. So maybe industrial isn't the right redevelopment strategy there, just that it's a pain point for our community, that it's an underutilized asset, and, and there's something that could be done there when, when the market conditions present. And then finally, I wanted to thank you for your editorial in the newspaper regarding the school infrastructure. I think it's important that folks like you who have a different kind of credibility in the community stand up and say that we really do have a problem there, and that what's on the table in the legislature right now does not address that issue. So I wanted to thank you for your leadership on that, and if there's anything we can do to support that conversation because that's going to be a huge pain point. And the workforce development side is, if you don't have schools that have buildings, you've, you've got some significant issues. So thank you for your leadership on that.
It will also affect our image. If we start buying 400 temporaries, we won't look too techie and we won't look too advanced.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mike, thanks. Appreciate it. Very successful. It's never, never, I'll say it again, I've said it before, never, ever been better since you've been here, and, you know, I, I really appreciate it. I know, as, as the council does and the rest of the, of Northern Nevada. So thank you so much for what you do.
Just want to let you know, you've got a first-class team here in your staff. We appreciate working with them, and it, you know, it takes a team effort. I mean, at the end of the day, we're only as good as the team that we work with, and the team we have right now is an A-team, and we look across the board in this region. Everyone has put their shoulder to the wheel to get economic development done, and look at the results. It's kind of scary, but good news.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, next is, we're going to have a closed-door session, right, Steve? So we want to, we want to, we're not coming back, are we?
No, sir. We'll actually deal with two different matters, one a legal matter and one a labor issue. We're not planning on returning because there'll be no action for the council to take on either one of those today.
So then we can, when we adjourn, we can adjourn to a closed-door session after?
Yes, if we could do that.
Redevelopment?
After the redevelopment, that would be convenient.
Okay. Right, so could I get a, or wait, I guess I need to do the rest of the agenda. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public want to speak? Comments from the city council and city manager? Okay, then could I get a motion to adjourn to a closed-door session immediately following the redevelopment agency meeting? Mr. Lawson.
I'll move.
Do I have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to adjourn to a closed-door session immediately following the redevelopment agency meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, and we are adjourned.
I'd like to call the orders. The February 23th Sparks Resilience Agency meeting at the hall. Chairperson Ratty.
Here.
Agency members Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt, absent.
Agency attorney Adams.
Here.
And agency chief administrative officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any public comment? Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by agency member Lawson, seconded by agency member Martini. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Approval of the minutes of the January 26th meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion by agency member Bybee, seconded by agency member Lawson.[1748.21]